Good evening. I'd like to call to order the Jenkentown Borough Council Public Meeting for May 22, 2017. And, Chair, would you lead us into the next?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Commissioner Lockwood, would you do the walk?
Vice President Bunker, here. Council McCann.
Here.
Council Connors.
Coming late.
Council Farrell.
Also coming late.
Council Danilat.
On me.
President Tanco.
Here.
Council Luder.
Here.
Council Golden.
Asked to be excused.
Council McGowan.
Here.
Council Young. She has to be excused.
Mr. Maestro.
Council Whitney.
Yes, sir.
Councilor Soltziak.
Here.
I'm Chair, you have a quorum.
Thank you very much. Okay. I'd like to move that we approve the minutes of last month's meeting, April 24, 2017.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments about those minutes? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Vice President Bunker, can you do payrolls and invoices?
I move that we approve payrolls dated April 27 and May 11 in the amount of $139,018.21 in invoices totaling $247,341.41.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions, comments? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, thank you. And now we have, let me just think for a second. We have a brief presentation, which I would like to change the order. Can we do that, Council? Okay. Before we have public comment, I'm going to ask Mr. David Rowland to make a brief presentation, and then we'll take time for public comment. So, welcome, Mr. Rowland.
Thank you, Madam Chairman.
Yeah.
It was called here because we, a little background, I'm president of the Old York Road Historical Society, president of the board, and a couple of years ago, the post, American Legion Post that used to be in Jenkentown, the Coach Jordan American Legion Post folded, and they had a home fund of about $40,000 something that was turned over to the Historical Society as an endowment fund, the income of which primarily would be used to maintain more monuments in Jenkentown and Abington. So Ted Jensen was part of that. I know he was longtime mayor here in Mr. Jenkentown. We also got a gift from him, and one of the things that we were looking to do, our first project, would be to restore the monument that's right out here opposite the borough on the other side of the drive, the World War I monument that was installed in 1919. When we first thought about this fund, we had a, it used to be the old Milner Farm Restoration Folks, it's now called Materials Conservation. They do like the Washington Monument, the Park Museum, and all those kind of buildings. They came out and looked at all the monuments, gave us an assessment. We went back to them when we had homed in on the one here in Jenkentown. They've given us a report of the cost to do the restoration, and it's mostly cleaning and conservation work, is $2,000. And we decided at our board that we would like to do 50/50. So if the borough was willing to do 1,000, we would put in the other 1,000 and have the work done to have the granite cleaned, have the bronze plaque taken off, have that conserved, waxed. There's one of the little rosettes is missing over the screws that would be replicated, and then it would be reinstalled. And we would look to have sort of an unveiling or finish that at some point, maybe for Veterans' Day this coming year, maybe for Memorial Day next, and then do something in honor of Ted when we do that.
Okay. Thank you. Are there any questions about the project?
I have a question. Did, are you prioritizing and doing kind of a triage on the different monuments that you had assessed, or why did you select this monument?
Jenkentown first because of Ted.
Okay.
There's one in Noble that Abington, that's in Abington Township, that needs tens of thousands of dollars for the work. And then Abington's looking to move some of their monuments when they change the intersection at York and South Valhalla that's going to get moved down to the Warhammer Island. So we're working with them on how that island is going to get redesigned, because the Noble Monument will also get moved when the bridge gets done over the Noble chain tracks, and that goes to one lane each way for a couple of years. So, yeah, this seemed to be easy. Ted was, Ted was interested in the project, and, you know, he wanted to do that first go.
Thank you for that explanation. I was the one who actually asked if you would come, because it felt like it was like a huge, I don't know, to clean a stone, but I understand what you're saying.
Then I brought, if you want, Natalie Karas, who is on our board, and she also is a conservator at Materials Conservation, if you had technical questions or anything else.
Yeah, I'm happy to walk you through a little bit what our, what our plan is, if you want to hear some of the steps.
Sure.
So the granite really doesn't need very much done to it. Granite's a very durable stone, so it's not very dirty. Most of the work and the time and the money is going to go into the bronze plaque, because the bronze plaque has not had a wax treatment applied to it in a long time, so there's been some corrosion. So if you look at it up close, you can see that there's some green corrosion shown up on the surface. So what we want to do is actually unscrew the plaque from the granite backing. We're going to take it to our conservation studio, and we're going to clean it, and we're going to repaint it and apply a new protective wax on it. And when that's done, it's going to have that deep, rich bronze color again, and that's going to protect it for many years to come. You probably won't have to do anything, a touch-up wax would be maybe in five years, and that would not be the same price. This is purely because this is the first time, it looks to me the first time the plaque has been waxed.
And hopefully our fund would be able to support the ongoing things.
Okay. Well, thank you very much for that, and I would imagine that we will go ahead and support the request. And I think it's going to come up later on our order of business.
Madam President, if you'd like, you could just make a motion to open the agenda, make a motion now, and we go back to the next one.
All right. Why don't we do that? Yeah.
It's a public comment.
Yeah. So I will move to, we go out of the regular order and move that we approve the request from the Old York Road Historical Society to restore the World War I monument that was outside of Borough Hall, for not to exceed $1,000. Do I hear a second?
Just a public comment.
Any comment? All right. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you very much. And thank you both for coming out.
Thanks so much.
You're welcome to stay, you're also welcome to go.
I'll pick up the torch later.
Okay.
Thank you all.
Thanks so much. Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now go back to the regular agenda and find out if there is any public comment or questions.
Yes.
Could you state your name and address?
Yes. Patricia Hart, and I'm 71th Avenue Avenue. And today I downloaded the minutes from the March meeting, which I attended. And standing and talking, it's not an easy thing for many people. I'm, I'm one of them, so if I falter or as I did before, give the wrong address, please understand. My tooth just fell out there. Believe it or not, I'm going to continue.
Take your time, take your time.
The tooth will still be out, but if you don't mind the gesture that seems obscene. And with that, I'll continue. I felt badly to reenact an advert that I was reflected in the minutes as a negative person. I came to the last three meetings that I was able to attend with an agenda, and I, from the day one, made my agenda clear, and it was never that this board is doing nothing. As a matter of fact, twice I stood to say, you have such a myriad of activities, it's quite enlightening to me, and I feel good that I don't have to do that. And I also feel good that I don't have to do the minutes, because I've done that many, many times, and it's no fun. It's a challenging job, to say the least. So I don't particularly fault the minute taker or the reviewers, I don't think it's even appropriate for me to ask who, but in the minutes, it stated that I felt you were doing nothing. At the last meeting, I'm not, I'm not an uneducated person, I felt sincere ranker in this house, with taxpayers talking to their council and their solicitors. And I got on my feet after an exchange with Mr. Kilkeny and Mrs. Downs. I'm not here as Mrs. Downs' archangel or Mr. Kenny's saint. I'm simply here with what I actually believe. And I thought that the activities at 303 seemed to be going very slowly, because I felt if any of you lived next to that situation, you would have found it intolerable. And then I began to be aware, because I attended a hearing at Judge McHugh's, that there was incidents previous to this, this gentleman and his antics in our township that had been handled. So I began to wonder if some of the hesitation was because of previous scars, and I don't pretend to know all of the things that you all have gone through that would make it so slow to act on his language and such. One of the things Mr. Kilkeny brought up, as he called Mrs. Downs "Miss" three times, sounded a little disingenuous to me. I'd correct a student for acting that way. So when I got on my feet, I said, "I'm Miss, she's Mrs." And then I continued. I questioned whether or not things were being taken care of, because I had come to understand how many people, boroughs, are under Mr. Kilkeny's care, and my whole heart question was, why is it taking so slow to come to the defense of a neighbor, neighbors, who are obviously going through a terrible, terrible time? In the course of that, I asked about the other address, the address with the gentleman the month before, and the reason again that I asked about that is, he said he comes and comes as nothing is done. Did you not hear that, say that, nothing was done, then he comes? Did you not feel the frustration that gentleman felt? I can't account for you, because I'm not walking in your shoes, but I had a personal interaction with Mr. Kilkeny when he said something was done and defeated, and it wasn't at all. He just didn't give it the time. And I had to pursue it for the next 10 years to get it done, when it's been done. Any of you who could hear that story with Mr. Kilkeny, I'll be glad to go through it with you. And with the gentleman who has since died, who was part of this board, you'll have to believe one or the other of us, because what do I have to lose or gain? Okay. When I asked Mr. Kilkeny what was happening with the other address, perhaps you remember, he said, "We're working on it." A few months later, I said, "Could you tell us anything?", and with the same expression I'm getting now, he said, "I'm working on it." Well, that doesn't cut it. It wouldn't cut it in any office that I know of. This isn't Dilbert. I am grateful to you all for what you do. I'm embarrassed that my front tooth has fallen out. I am not embarrassed the way I am feeling about what is happening in this township, at Borough meetings, with what doesn't seem to be an upfront and positive protagonist activity for residents in this neighborhood. Thank you for your listening.
Thank you for your statement, and I would just reiterate that Borough Council has talked with the manager and with the solicitor repeatedly. We have been working with Mr. and Mrs. Downs over and over again, so we are aware of the situation on Monday. We are very sympathetic to what's happening. The situation is being monitored. We are taking as many actions as we possibly can. And I apologize for the slowness of it, and I also know that as we work through what is legally possible to do, that sometimes that just takes more time than we would like.
Could I add just one quick to you, and you were very gracious. I forgot to say that much time was spent at the last, at that March meeting with correcting between civil and criminal. I think we all knew the difference between the two. My question to you would be, how did it get to have to be a criminal situation? Why wasn't it handled at a civil situation?
I'm not entirely sure what the question.
It is a civil situation. In fact, we just, we just petitioned the judge, Mrs. Downs, well aware of it. She presented new evidence to us in April. We're putting it in front of the judge. In fact, I even contacted her and scheduled a correct time to go over all that and present to the judge, so I'm a little confused by that.
Well, I thank you for answering that, and good, good. I'm glad that stuff is happening. But at the last meeting, was there not explaining that this was, that criminal doesn't fall under your venue?
That is correct. She filed a private criminal complaint, which is her right to do in a common law in Pennsylvania.
Or that she dealt with her.
I do not, as township solicitor, I do not do that. I handle civil matters.
I do understand that.
And the civil matter that I'm moving forward with, that the judge held open, is a civil matter for a possible zoning violation. Mrs. Downs came forward, presented evidence to us, we're going to present to the judge.
And I would just, one more question? I must be, I did think that if the criminal thing wouldn't have been handled if more pressure may have been put on that gentleman.
It would be nice to think that, thank you. I also, you referenced another address, and I'm not entirely sure, I think you were talking about the Long Street, yeah.
My heart ached for that gentleman.
And I just wanted to say that action is being taken on that situation. That is a situation that had, that the borough has been working on for several years, and again, sometimes because of property ownership and the legal system, things don't go as quickly as we would like, but it's definitely an address that we are well aware of and that we stay on top of regularly. Okay, yes.
205 Runnymede Avenue. I just wanted to follow up with what Pat said in terms of the minutes and discussion for the March meeting. At the March meeting, Solicitor Kilkeny stated, as he stated this evening, he is a civil attorney, his office doesn't handle criminal complaints. He said he does not advise the chief. He said, in a very aggressive and maybe even hostile way, I would say, to Mr. Nagbor, "You were informed wrong, sir," when Mr. Nagbor brought up that his office had advised the chief. The minutes do not reflect that his office did advise the chief on a criminal matter, and advised the chief to stand down, which the chief did, and the minutes do not reflect that. And the chief then apologized and said he was sorry that he had followed that advice, and that particular incident that turned, which rolled into the criminal complaint is now, as Peggy said, or whoever, 62 counts, which likely involves jail time, and that's what our civil attorney advised us to stand down. So I just want to make that clear, because the minutes do not make that conversation clear.
Thank you.
I think I can clear this, hold this understanding now, for a lot of people in the audience. The solicitor's office, Solicitor Kilkeny's office, Natasha, I believe I spoke with Natasha, never ever, ever advised me not to file disorderly conduct charges. She never advised me to do that. I won't take blame for not filing those charges, and I'll explain. But let me just shoot back something real quick. 62 counts of criminal violations were filed at this record by the Downs', probably more than half have never been, we were never notified of the documentation that they filed on. So police were never even involved in that. The Downs', had every right to file those criminal charges based on what they documented, that they saw, and the police were never ever called to document anything. So we're totally out of that realm. This particular instance that they're talking about is, there was a situation where the gentleman was up and down the driveway, and he was using foul language and making gestures to, to whatever he was doing. So they, the Downs', filed a complaint, the officer went down, I was, it was on a weekend, I believe, was it Dave?
Friday.
Friday, it was a weekend. And I advised the officer, well, you know, we said that if he does anything illegal, we're going to file disorderly conduct. That's the job of the police department. The solicitor's office never advises the police on criminal charges, if it's...
District Attorney's Office, correct?
Yeah, we go to the District Attorney's Office, but in this particular case, I knew very well, I've been in this business 41 years, and I know that somebody's acting disorderly or not. So I was all about filing disorderly conduct charges against the gentleman for his action. And I said to the officer, "I'm going to send it down to the judge as far as I'm concerned, he's disorderly." But I, I was also sent a video of the situation, and I knew that the, that the solicitor's office had other videos, not related to criminal, but related to the business complaint about. So I knew that George was supplying videos when he felt it necessary, so I had a video that I thought would be helpful in this massive case folder that had nothing to do with the business, but I thought, well, I would send that video anyway. That resulted in a conversation between Natasha and myself via the telephone. And I suggest I tell, you know, we're filing charges, and it was her, it was her opinion that she didn't feel it was, it reached the level of disorderly conduct based on, it wasn't a face-to-face thing, the guy was doing all these gestures for the camera. I certainly disagree with her, with all due respect to Natasha, and she, I said to her, with all due respect to Natasha, "I'm going to file the charges." She says, "Chief, you do what you need to do." And I hung up, and I was finishing my coffee at my kitchen table, and I was thinking, I'm thinking, I don't want to complicate this issue any further than what it is. And so I recalled the officer, and I said, "Look, hold off on those charges, because I'm not sure if it rises to that level at this point." Because I do respect the solicitor's opinion, I do respect his associate's opinion. That was my fault, Madam President, and Mayor. I told the officer not to file this, but the solicitor's office never told me to do it. So the charges were, that one disorderly conduct was not charged. However, the police department has filed charges on that gentleman on several occasions because of disorderly conduct, because that's what we do. I don't seek advice on when to charge somebody, I know when to charge somebody. I, and I apologize to the officer, and I apologize to the truth, because they, they said, "Hey, chief, you said whenever this guy acts up, we're to charge him, and now you're saying for us not to do it." So I want to take the hit for that, Madam President. I told the officer not to do that, and, and as I told Natasha, right, face-to-face, when we were sitting right here, I should have never listened to that advice, and she respected my opinion, and I respect her.
Good, thank you. I'm going to, I just want to say one thing, and I want to point out that our minutes are composed based on audio recording, and so all of the statements that are being made tonight can serve to correct and clarify the minutes from March, so, yeah.
Just one follow-up on the chief's statement. I was made aware of the fact that you had this conversation with Natasha a couple of days after it happened, and I wasn't present at the conversation, I don't know what the tenor of it was, what either of you said, but my direction to you, as you'll recall, was that if you, if you are able to observe disorderly conduct happening, whether it's at 303 Runnymede, whether it's in the Foley's driveway, or whether it's in Town Square, you are at a site for that. And that was my direction to the chief, like, that's how we're going to be going forward. And the chief was very amenable to that.
All right. Thank you very much. Are there any other public comments? You and then Mr. Downs, is your hand up, or are you just?
No, just a question.
Okay. Go ahead.
About 307 Runnymede Avenue, I don't know too much on these minutes, but my question is, you went over the minutes before our public comments, you say this is taped, so I hope this will be corrected. What I, what was missing for me was that it was pointed out very clearly by me, but I think by somebody else too, that what Mr. Kilkeny had said was not correct, that they did advise on the criminal case too, but in the minutes, it looks like it was all, was it one of you, that nothing happened?
I will go back, I will go back and look at those minutes, I don't, I don't recall it, I have to confess, but I'll go back and take a look.
Okay.
Thank you. Is there any other public comment? Yes.
Randy Garbin, 99 Runnymede Avenue. I received last April a response to a write-to-no request that I had filed about 35 days before from Rick Ware. And what Rick said was that he would be unable to comply with my request, and but that if I had any questions or concerns, that I could write to Natasha at the law offices of Sean Kilkeny. I did so three times. The third, the third mail, piece of mail letter arrived today, it should have anyway, by certified mail with return receipt, which I haven't received yet. So my question is, am I going to get an answer to my, to my letter?
My understanding, Mr. Garbin, is we responded accordingly for the State Sunshine Law and Open Records Act. Your request was denied in the sense that if you want to provide a third-party vendor to get the information you wanted to, which was quite all you good, and that you have an appeal to the Office of Open Records if you want to.
That I understand, but in the letter that I sent to you, it became clear to me that you had information that you were withholding from me.
That's not true.
Well, it is, because, allow me to prove you wrong yet again, Sean. I was sent a quote from one of three vendors, and the quote would require me to foot the bill. So I thought that it was within my rights to ask for the other two quotes, since, since I'm going to be the person to pay for this service, I should at least know what the other vendors are. That was one of my questions.
I said, you are free to file your appeal with the office.
So as, so as someone who is in service to the borough, you feel, you feel quite comfortable with completely ignoring a resident of this borough when he files, when he sends you a letter asking you perfectly reasonable questions?
Sir, if you are interested in that information...
I know in my recourse, but I'd like to go through yours.
That's, that's your answer, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Are there any other public comments or questions? Yes.
I have a question about the Septup parking lot, but I'm not sure, yeah, yeah, I know.
Septup parking?
The Septup parking lot.
At the train station?
The train station, yeah. And they recently, maybe six months ago, they redid the payment system.
Right, the kiosk, or the lack of kiosks.
Well, no, no, I mean, I mean for the parking.
Right, $2, yes.
So you have to put in four quarters, which I think is already very inconvenient nowadays.
Yes.
But they placed it so far from the, in front of the train station, the handicap spots, that's very close to the train, I think it's very convenient for handicap people. But they will have to go pretty far out of the way to put their four quarters in, I think that's, that undermines the purpose of the parking. So, and it would have been possible, I think, because it was just a little case, to put a case for the, for the handicap parking spots closer to the handicap parking spots. Is that something that borough... Is that something that Borough...
Well, we would love to be able to affect that. Um, and we could certainly, uh, communicate about it when we next talk to Septa.
Okay.
Um, there are other things about that pay station that I think are problematic as well, so I join you in your concern about that.
Okay.
Um, and also, we would, I'll just say publicly that we would like very much for Septa to, um, have a reasonable plan for, um, having some kind of business occupy that, um, the station. So, um, we have lots of reasons to want to talk to Septa, and thank you very much for your comments. Yes.
Um, I just have one other comment regarding Cedar Street, um, from the minutes from...
Oh, would you state your name again, just so we have...
Lord Durkin, two oh five Runnymede. Um, from the minutes from the January twenty-third meeting, Mayor Foley, and I believe sincerely, um, reassured residents that the process of Cedar Street development is only in the beginning stages, the next step is to receive public input on what the public would like to do to see this property become, the property is all up to the community to develop. Um, and, and I believe that that was a sincere statement on his part. Um, but as I observe those who are leading this process, I have only seen meetings take place at EAC where there's basically, what kind of park do you want? And the survey instrument that was set out, sent out basically said, what kind of park do you want? So, I'd like to know what I am missing, since there's almost as many people who came to these meetings and signed a petition that are against the development of this property as a park, including, well, I'm not authorized to speak on behalf of others, but, um, what are, what are these steps that you're taking to evaluate non-park options and looking at selling it and other opportunities, not the park?
Um, okay, I'm just taking down these, these questions. I'll speak briefly to that, and then I'll ask if other people would like to comment. When we were offered to, uh, receive this piece of property and we were, we were asked if we wanted to buy this property at a discounted rate, uh, we had several conversations on council, uh, we discussed it in at least two public meetings, and many people around the table said, we think it would be appropriate to make it a park, the, um, the people who sold it to us sold it with that hope, and we reserved the right to investigate other, uh, other actions. Uh, at this point in time, um, the consensus around this table is that using it as park space and open space and green space would be the best thing for the community. We are still taking steps to, uh, investigate the costs of the steps that need to be taken in order to do that. Um, there are still questions about whether we will leave one building up or two, you know, a garage up. Um, all of those questions are being raised but are not answered at this time. We have not received any, um, quotes about it, and we're still compiling the numbers so that we can make, um, good judgment about that. We have heard citizens' comments who say that they think the property should be resold, and I think I'm speaking to people around the table who simply disagree with that point of view. And we thank the public for letting us know. We have heard from numerous people that they think having it be green space and park space is a good idea. So, and, um, and so, we are listening to all of those different points of view, and we have our own point of view, and we are the people who are going to put this into, um, into operation. So, at this point in time, yes, we had a very large, uh, and well-attended EAC meeting where a lot of input was gathered. Um, we had a survey that was put out, it was part of somebody's, um, master's, um, coursework in landscape architecture, and so, it was designed in a, in a particular way. Uh, and we did receive a few comments on that survey that said, I think you should sell the property. Um, we, just the other night, on Wednesday night, we had another EAC meeting at which, um, people were invited to talk more about it, that was pretty well-attended, I think there were about twenty-five people in attendance. And, um, one, I think one or two people, maybe you can help me remember, um, spoke about how they still felt that they, um, that it was wrong to lose the tax revenue that was associated with this property. And I would say that the majority of the people who were in attendance continued to talk about their enthusiasm for having it be a park. Um, we think that we are making steps that are, um, it's a legacy decision, it's a decision that will affect generations, and we do recognize that it will result in some, um, loss of tax revenue, and there will be associated costs. Would anyone else like to add?
I'd like to say that, you know, when I was at the meeting, I've been at the meetings, more than, I would say probably half of people who come live on Cedar Street, they're directly impacted. The next meeting is June twenty-first, so if you'd like to speak with residents who are, who are going to be immediately affected, or to engage with them, to hear what they have to say, please come out on the twenty-first. The EAC is running the meeting because they are kind of the, the group that's spearheading most things that have to do with, um, that they're developing of this, of this open space versus it being a Borough-led, council-led initiative in terms of like the decision-making. So, yeah, June twenty-first, we'll be here.
No, I, I don't have really anything to add, but, no, you're right. And most, and the reason why we did it with the, on the EAC, nine of those were already established meeting nights, and so that's what kind of made sense, that they were easy to tap onto that as well.
I just want to add that out of, I think, of the forty-four hundred residents, I think there were two hundred and change that responded to the survey, um, the majority of them affirmatively in terms of the, um, the, what kind of park did they want, but there were almost as many people who came out in opposition to it, so I just wanted...
Not filling out the survey, though. I mean, you can go online and read the results.
No, no, not, no, not the survey, but the other community outreach.
Okay.
I mean, you go, it was...
No, but I mean, I do think that, we do want to hear everyone's voices, and so, you know, they should complete the survey. I mean, if that, if that's the feeling.
It's like, what kind of park do you want?
No, but in the, we did, did have some negative responses, but it would say overwhelmingly it was, it was all very positive.
And I'll just say, you know, all these public, um, input sessions we've had, we want to hear everyone's input, and the vast majority of people who come out and express their opinion are in favor of this. So, and again, if you feel strongly otherwise, we'd encourage you to come and let us know.
Um, all right. Yes.
Randy Garbin again, ninety-nine Running Mead. Um, to say that the people that came out to us are going to be the most impacted, I, I got to correct you, we are all impacted.
No, no, that's just a fact.
No, 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 no. We are all impacted. People who live on the other side of town, who may never even go to that, we're impacted, okay? Because our school tax is likely to go up, our property taxes, the borough tax will probably go up, there will be a loss of tax revenue for the entire community. And when you position a survey that says, what kind of park do you want, you basically have rendered it a fait de complet. Who is going to show up for a meeting, or take the survey and expose themselves as someone who's a ne'er-do-well, when you've already made up your mind, you've said so as much yourself tonight? It's not a done deal. I would like to see a survey go out that says, we have a piece of property here at Cedar Street, what would you like us to do with it? And one of the choices being, sell it. Another one be, make a park, another one, build a new Borough Hall. I don't know, but don't make it sound like a fait de complet. It's disingenuous for you to sit there and say, the public had its say, because it didn't, and you know it.
I would like, I would like to comment on your comment. We are not saying that the public is being invited to give input onto whether or not we will keep or sell the property at this point in time. We have made the decision to buy the property, and when we made that decision, the consensus around this table was that it would be best to be used as green space. So, thank you. Um, and I, I understand that's based...
You just proved my point, thank you.
You're very welcome. Yes.
I just want to say, speaking as Chair of Admin and Finance, that the tax revenue we're talking about is, Rick, what'd we figure out? It was one-sixteenth of one percent?
Yeah, I don't remember the...
It's absolutely negligible, there's no...
For what, the purchase?
The, the, no, for the loss of tax revenue.
Okay, what about the, the construction cost and loss of tax revenue from how many years?
I'm talking about the loss of tax revenue, which is what the point was, and it's one-sixteenth of one percent, it's immaterial, there's no way it's going to lead to an increase in taxation. Secondly, the voice of people has been heard when we were elected, and we've listened and are continuing to have an ongoing dialogue with everybody to find out what we should do with this. The question of selling it, I think, is pretty much closed, but should it be a playground? Should it be...
Obviously.
A skating tube? Should it be a community garden? All those things are open.
Thank you. Yes, a couple more comments.
Okay, um, so, Mr. Durkin? Um, so, I spend a lot of time on the playground because my kids are in elementary, and the feedback that I get on the soft side is that the people who have children in elementary are very much for this, because they want another place for their kids to go. Um, they also have a big concern about if we build nine units there, three kids in each unit, what kind of stress is that going to put on the school? So, these might not be the people who are, who are answering your survey or showing up at meetings because their children are in kindergarten for second, third grade, or they have to be home with them, but that's the kind of soft feedback that, um, every day on the front. Just so you know, it's just what I'm getting at.
One more comment, yes, your question.
Last one. Uh, date Downs three oh three. I just want to let everyone know, the people that are here, or three oh one, I'm sorry.
Did you do that?
Yeah. Wow. But, uh, I just want to say thanks for the people that are coming to support us, and other people that are on Facebook, help us, support us. But as I told you last month, the business is still going on, every day it's going on. I know Sean, we have a meeting coming up this week, so he's right about that with George. It's still going on, people don't know, that these people probably don't even know what's going on. We're affected, we're right by it. Five o'clock in the morning, there's stuff going in and out, noise. He told, their neighbor called us at nine in the morning and said, uh, what's going on over there? Five-thirty in the morning, something's going, all that noise. Well, call the police, I mean, so they don't, I don't understand, we, we're there and we're being affected with it. I just want to let people know, it's still going on, it's a no-impact residential area. No business out of there, I don't care if it's concrete, bucket, or anything, it shouldn't be there. Signs on the truck, noise going in and out. So, I just want to let people know that, that's what's going on. Thank you.
Uh, Madam President, I just want to reiterate and thank you, Dave. Just so the public understands, we, after we heard from the Downs on April, I wrote a letter, Judge McHugh, and requested a new hearing. At Tom, you will be able to present this evidence to her, and she will be able to make a determination if the business is being operated or not.
Right.
And more than that, I'm working with you...
Right, that's why I know that.
...for that case. So, I just want to be clear, we're not ignoring it.
Oh, I know, that's why I said you're working with us, we have a meeting with you on Friday.
You want to be clear.
But I just wanted to let the people know that nobody knows. I mean, I don't know if everybody knows. I mean, that's why I'm putting it out. Maybe some of you guys don't know, you don't get the emails and everybody that we sent out, so I want to let everybody know from the town that the business is still going on, we still have an issue. That's all, Madam President, I'd say we're working with Sean on Friday, and George.
Thank you. Um, Chief, have you received any complaints about five AM noise?
Yeah, I have.
Okay. It would be good if there is five AM noise for the police to report and, and document that.
I told her that.
Okay.
I told the neighbors.
Oh, you told the neighbor, okay.
Three doors up, or four doors up. I told the neighbor to do it.
All right. I appreciate all you coming out and, um, making these comments very, very much.
I just asked them to go quick to that.
Okay.
We'll investigate a founded complaint.
Okay.
So, if somebody goes out to start the car to go over to work in the morning at five-thirty, we'll have to pick each case individually.
Yes. Right. Thank you. All right, we're now closing public comment and moving on to committee reports. Admin and Finance, Vice President and Director.
I'm going to chair. Uh, there's a report in Dropbox, we'll securitiate, there are two items on the order of business which are policy clarifications, we're just creating more formal policies, um, around contractor contracts and capitalization, reporting to the state, and there was discussion of ClearGov.com, it's a company that we've hired to help, um, put all of the Borough financials going back, what, we're going back five years there?
Uh, ultimately to two thousand and four.
Okay, so ultimately thirteen-year back.
Thank you for coming.
Structured in a way that, uh, people can search for different things, compare across the years, slice and dice, and, uh, truly, it's pretty tight to see the insights that can be gained by going through, which is be the admin and finance guy saying that the, uh, financials are exciting, but it's, it's pretty cool to be able to really find your way through all of the, the Borough's finances and see what's happened over the years, et cetera. So, um, we're probably a couple months away from, uh, all the data being loaded and organized and, um, formally released.
A month, sorry.
A month? Okay, so we might be a little closer here. Um, I have a report, it's pretty...
Great. Thank you. Any questions or comments? All right, building zoning and revitalization.
I report, thank you, um, is in your Dropbox. I'll highlight a few things. Um, as we discussed last month, an RFI, um, for proposals for, um, development, potential to development of, um, Borough properties, um, was advertised and distributed on the sixteenth, I believe, um, to developers. So, um, we're looking forward to furthering that process and, and hearing back from developers. Um, additionally, there is a zoning hearing board, um, hearing this Thursday, um, regarding Lockner Nissan's, um, application for variance to store cars at six-ten Old York Road. Um, council has opposed that, and, um, will be represented on the twenty-fifth by, um, Solicitor Kenny's firm. Um, great news is that we did receive the twenty-fourty county, the county twenty-fourty implementation grant, um, in the amount of seventy-three thousand dollars to develop the Southern Gateway. Um, so that was a, a great vision, um, that, um, Manager Locke, along with our county planners and, um, our engineer, um, Cal worked on in short order, and, um, we're very happy with the design, and looking forward to implementing, implementing that grant. And then lastly, we have one item on, uh, the agenda regarding creation of, um, a use and occupancy inspection for residential resets.
Any questions or comments? Karen, what's the deadline for the RFI? Do you know? Is there any?
I will.
It's on website, wait a second. Okay, never mind, now you're looking at the website.
Look, it's right after Labor Day, right? I believe so.
That's our... July eleventh, thank you.
Oh, okay.
I thought we were going, we had decided we were going to open them...
Yeah.
...right after Labor Day.
Labor Day, yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. Commanding to do sixty days, three...
Sixty days, okay. Okay, thank you. Any other questions or comments? All right, um, building, uh, public safety.
Yes, um, the minutes from the meeting are in the Dropbox. We have one item on the agenda for part-time car commercial, and one item for executive section.
Thank you. Any questions or comments about public safety? Okay. And public works?
Uh, back in, Madam President, the minutes from the meeting are in Dropbox. Um, real quick, um, as far as paving goes, Pico is making its way up Rodman. Um, it's pretty much on schedule to be completed, um, in the early spring, so our paving project is on target, um, for late August, early September. I do have one item on the agenda in reference to the two thousand sixteen CDBG grant. I'd be happy to answer any questions.
Any questions or comments?
I have a question.
About public, uh, works?
Yeah.
Okay.
Date Downs three oh three, Runnymede, uh, or three oh one, Runnymede.
I just want to say, I'm making an exception, we don't usually take comments from this portion, but if it's a quick question...
Yeah, what, uh, is there any other streets on the Borough that are on the hit list for being paved, beside Rodman?
With the Vista.
Hillside, four hundred block? Were, are they going to repair that?
Yeah.
Oh, Manager Locke, could you speak to that, because we had that question come up.
The main has been installed, they have to come back and install the services, and four hundred block was recently paved, so Pico will have to repave the road when they're done.
What about some of the concrete work that, that people had on, uh, Hillside that needed to be done, the curbs and stuff? I noticed a few houses on Hillside, four hundred block, that curbs... I noticed a few houses on Hillside, 400 block, that curbs are falling apart.
I may have misspoke. Is 400 the block we haven't paved yet, Dave?
I don't, I'm not sure. It's between Long and Elm.
Then that would, we would plan to put that on the following year's.
Okay, okay.
On that portion, PICO will pay for half of the payment.
Okay.
If they hadn't paid.
Okay. I was just curious. That road is miserable.
Thank you. All right. We're going to move now to the School District. Council of Lund.
Thank you, Madam President. The Manager of Hogg, George, has been meeting with Dr. Tockus every month prior to public safety meetings to try to just be clear with the school district about where borough activity affects or impacts the school district. And we're going to continue to have our meetings every month moving forward to preview that agenda meeting. One of the things that came up is she'd like to make a request on behalf of the school district that the borough and all of the rec board groups fill out a facility use form preferably within a month of events so that she can, they can coordinate usage. She has no intention of denying anything, but an example might be like the use of pesticides on fields or, you know, those kinds of things. She wants to kind of clean up the logistics so that we can just be a better coordination effort. So, I will continue to report out anything comes up in those meetings, mostly in public safety because that's where they mostly will have the direct.
So, we need to get that word out to the rec board.
Yeah, they have no more advanced plan for school building this year.
Okay.
The Easter.
The Easter. Yeah. There was a concern about the Easter day. All right. Thank you very much. JCA Community Alliance, Councilor Farrell.
JCA met at the beginning of the month and then again, actually last May to welcome any new members who would like to contribute to JCA, either with regards to overall activities or specifically as it relates to the Arts Fest. Unfortunately, no one came to the welcome new members meeting. So, we will continue to talk to people who we think might be interested in volunteering. We're still looking for a lot of help for the Arts Fest. Just a couple updates. Shamnee Brewing has stepped up to handle the single-serve beer works that day. And that's great to have them on board. And the musical lineups are getting worked out and a number of vendors have already signed up to come back. So, many people are looking forward to it. But again, if anyone in the community is interested in volunteering, you know, leading up to it or day of, in fact, we need a volunteer coordinator day of. So, if you want to help with that, let us know. We'll be happy to put you to work. We did receive a lot of positive feedback from public safety. We love the Arts Fest. We want to make it, you know, we want to make sure it continues. We just kind of need folks to follow us, come to the meeting and talk about that.
What is the date of the Arts Fest? September? I should know it off the top of my head. Let me see. This is the 24th. Is that late?
I don't know.
Yeah, it would be nice to have it. It doesn't sound ago.
I'll let you, I'll look it up and remember it.
Thank you. Any questions? All right. Multi municipal group, Councilor Golden isn't here and I'm not aware of anything going on. Okay, so moving on to Public Works Department. Do you want to report for Mr. Riggins?
I can. He did produce a report that was read at Public Works Committee. Highlighted some things. Jim was actually taking a short vacation and he returns tomorrow. Much needed vacation. We did receive Truck 23 back. We had the new bed installed on it. We had the repairs made. So, we are now able to pretty much decommission 27, which is in bad shape and smoking and plan to replace it next year. So, you shouldn't see that bad truck on the road unless there's a real emergency. The street sweeper's 100% to borough, street sweeping schedule has been put out. That is required by the MS4 program. But we sent our, we sent a CDL driver to training for three days and he came back. He has a good understanding of it. It's all maintenance. It's 100% now. I could answer any other questions that we have for Public Works, but there was nothing to highlight.
Is the street sweeping schedule on the website?
I don't, I don't know that.
No, no, it could, I would like it to be, so we could just check that. I'll send an email.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. I'll just follow up with the pizza number 17. Number 16. Okay. All right. Engineering report.
Thank you, Madam President. Copy of my report is in your packets. Couple things I wanted to highlight. However, one is already on Borough Business, which is the 2016 CDVG advertisement. The second item is the small water grant. Just a comment, actually, we're just sort of forward to receiving further direction from the borough and planning to move forward, which will be preparation of the good documents for this project. This is the area that we had identified based on the grant that we're seeing from the borough. And we just will move forward once we receive additional direction, if you will.
Are you referring to the match?
Exactly. Correct. It's the match and it's also the area that we had identified as this is what we foresee an area that will fall within 150,000, 160,000 and to move forward with that area, whether it is complete lining, the lining of the system, or spot repairs.
Okay, well, we were directed to utilize the entire budget in match at the A and F committee meeting. And with my understanding, Paul was going to go back to the videos and evaluate the east side of Down, which is where most of the works on the paper is, and see if, just double-check that it all needs to be mined where he was looking at. And then with the additional amount of match, we're going to see how much we could do in the same drainage basin, in the Runnymede basin. Okay. Thank you.
So, just so I'm clear, the small water grant of $150,000 is slated to go toward sanitary sewer repair. Is that right?
Correct. Yeah, the whole focus out of the grant was to obtain funding to help or aid in the process of paying for, we have other sources.
Thank you.
Thank you. And I'll get the information to you first.
Okay.
Anybody have any more questions? All right, thank you very much. Solicitor's report.
I have a new report that I don't know if it's been covered previously in public comment.
Okay. Thank you. Mayor, Mr. Mayor, do you have anything?
I have no report other than a matter for executive session afterwards.
Okay. Chief Di Valentino?
Thank you, Madam President. My reports are in your Dropbox. I'll be glad to answer any questions if you have any questions for me tonight. But I also want to mention that I feel very honored to be invited to speak at Callamy synagogue on June 27 about immigration and police policies on the immigration situation in the United States. I would do that and I feel very privileged to do that.
Great.
And I saw my hat and I'm impressed with it.
Good. What was the date of that again?
It is Tuesday, June 27 from 7:00 to 9:00.
Okay. Thank you. And I noticed in your report, there was a letter from Kevin Steele, the district attorney, the county district attorney, congratulating Detective Mark Welsh for his exceptional work and presentation. So, congratulations.
Thank you. We went to a award ceremony at the Fire Academy last week and he was presented the award at that time.
That's great.
And we're very proud of that.
Very good. Any questions? Manager Locke?
My report is in Dropbox. A couple things I'd like to highlight. Some of them have been hidden. I'm trying to decide which ones were. But I think that we should definitely talk about the grants. One, Cal had brought up about the $150,000 small water grant that we received and the implementation grant that Council Farrell mentioned. We've also received the 2017 Greenlight Go grant. That is the same granting authority as PennDOT that provided the grant for the school safety lights. It's the same program. We're very familiar with it. We were awarded $89,000 in the 17 session and that's to upgrade our eight traffic lights. Right now, if the lights go out because of a storm or for any reason, Public Works has to get called in. They have to come to the shop. They have to get a generator. They have to report to any sections to hook it start, plug it in, and get the lights back on. In the meantime, the offices are out there on 611 directing traffic and sometimes it's the worst of weather conditions. This grant will make them all battery back up so they'll immediately come back on if there's power. It also provides three small state-of-the-art, I said the word, I'm sorry, generators that could easily take on the light. But these LEDs are very touchy. The old-style generators, they kick off and on. These are made by Honda. They're very small and they've had great luck, well, than PennDOT has. They will also upgrade all LED lights and the lights for this. It used to be a 50% match. Two years ago, they lowered it to 15%. And they seem to be giving out more money with it. So, that was a great thing that they did. That was written by Penoni. He really can do a phenomenal job on the things.
Let me just take a moment to say thank you very much for working with Penoni to put those things together and thank you now for working on that. Great to bring those funds to the borough for public improvement.
Yeah. It's a public safety, you know, it's a public safety improvement, but it's also a cost savings because, you know, we were paying quite a bit for overtime for our staff to be out there and we couldn't weather. And just to say goodbye. We will be putting this 2016 CDVG grant out for bid and I believe that is on the agenda tonight. We had a pre-construction meeting for the 2017 paving project and that opens this week, Cal?
Yes.
That opens this week. Two bidders came to the pre-bid meeting. It's not unusual to not have a lot of people come to that meeting because it's offered on Penn bid and you can enter any questions you want. And it's a good process because that way you can answer it online, so all the bidders get the answers and very clear process. So, the people who bid it last year came to the pre-bid meeting and they're interested in doing it.
And just to reiterate, the CDVG grant will be used for ADA-accessible ramps.
That is correct.
Any other questions or comments? Did you, is that it?
That's all I have.
All right. Thank you. Okay, and moving on to the Order of Business. Councilor Farrell, will you take this first item?
Sure. I'll make a motion and then I can explain a little bit about the ordinance after that. I make a motion to adopt ordinance number 2017-5 pertaining to the creation of a use and occupancy inspection for residential resales. Will you hear a second?
Second.
And the creation of this ordinance will require notarized affidavits of smoke detectors, curb and sidewalk inspections, four-reflective house numbers, and videotaping of sewer laterals from the house to the main. And all these things are in an effort to improve public safety and lessen environmental impact of damaged sewer laterals.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right. We could show you now this vote. Vice President Bunker, you have the next two items.
Thank you, Madam President. I make a motion to approve the borough capitalization policy. It's in your Dropbox. It really simply says if the borough buys things that cost more than $5,000 and are expected to last more than a year, that they're reported in the forms that we file with the state as capital acquisitions. Rick, is there any?
That's exactly what's.
So, it's just to clarify policy.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you.
Thank you. The professional services contract policy. I make a motion to approve the professional services contract policy. This again is a policy that we already follow, which just says, I think it's if it's above $2,500, we get three quotes and above, an amount set by the state borough code, which I believe right now is $18,000, things actually go out to bid. And it just formalizes that we're going to use that. Again, do I get it right?
The clarification I would make is that this is for pension work.
Oh, that's right. Sorry.
It's all retired work on the pension programs.
That's right. So, the reason we need the formal policy is so the auditors, when they audit the pension, see that there's a specific policy that says when we hire the actuaries to determine pension liabilities of the auditors or the advisors to determine pension investments, that we use this process.
Okay. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Questions? Is it? Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Great. Councilor Connors?
I make a motion to advertise the bid specifications for the 2016 CDVG grant. This just goes back to what Cal spoke of a minute ago. At the 2016 grant, the contract has been executed, the surveys then completed, and the design of the ramps had begun. So, now this needs to go out for our auditors.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any questions? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Thank you. Councilor Whitney?
I hired a part-time fire marshal. Make motion to hire Kevin Lynch as a borough part-time fire marshal. This is after a search, had four finalists, and we chose Mr. Lynch. Had to recruit people in interview and I think he is the best candidate, so I appreciate your support.
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you. And Councilor Luger?
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2017-6.
Wait, wait, I can pause just for a second. Should we clap? I can feel like, I'm sorry, I didn't know what to do.
Pleasure to meet you.
We're very happy to welcome you here and welcome you to the borough in a capacity that I know is very familiar to you.
Very much so.
I'm sorry to interrupt. Go ahead. Start from the beginning. Always interrupt me.
I make a motion to adopt resolution 2017-6, resolution in support of a constitutional amendment in Pennsylvania that would, among other things, assign the task of congressional redistricting to an independent citizens' redistricting commission.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
Are there any questions or comments? Yes.
We have, I just want to, we have Mark and Paula Schaefer from Fair District PA here with us, so I will, I have read it, but they are the experts. So, if you have any questions, direct it to them.
So, I have a comment, which is I want to thank you, Councilperson Luger, for bringing this forward and pushing it. It's a great thing for us.
Yes, thank you. That, it's really important. And I'm sorry that we didn't, I didn't realize that that's what you were here for. I would have pushed this further up in the agenda, but we're really happy. So, we've got a motion on the floor and a second. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?[1749.41] All right, very good. We actually have time now for new business. And I would like to, I move that we, but we, at our busy in our meeting and admin finance meeting, we have been talking about rejuvenating and getting more action from the Human Relations Committee. And so we have spoken with, and I've asked for the council's approval of Mary Mulderig as a new member of the HRC, our local HRC. So that is my motion. I move to appoint Mary Mulderig to the HRC of Jankontown. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Is there anybody, any questions or comments? Several people around the table got to meet Mary.
No, she's very impressive. Thank you for finding her and recruiting her.
Yeah, I think she'll do a great job. And she has already agreed to kind of look into what kind of training the group could get. So all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, thank you very much. One other new item that has come to our attention is about this, that we had proposed a tree be purchased for Town Square. And in the process of thinking about that and doing a little investigation, it seems to us that we should take it back to committee because we realized that there are a number of problems involved in putting a tree in the planter in the center of Town Square. One is that the planter can't really hold, we're concerned that the planter might not be large enough to hold the tree. And the second thing is that we realized the, that it would make an obstruction in the middle of our Town Square, which is okay during the winter, you know, holiday time. But I don't think we want it there 24/7 all the time because of all the events that we have there. So it's not really a motion, but I would just like to send this item back to committee for more discussion about the issue of having a tree at holiday time. That's it for that one. And then we wanted to make a statement about ice cream vendors in the borough. So I'm not sure that I have all the details of this. I'm going to rely on our solicitor and the manager to help me sort it all through. In fact, so, so many of people have noticed that there has been ice cream, at least one ice cream truck that's driving around the borough. And at the moment, we have an ordinance that prohibits the sale of any goods on the sidewalk or on the streets. So that ordinance, we have been advised by our solicitor to have that ordinance stand. And if occasionally we as councils wish to waive that ordinance for a special event or a particular period of time, or to put some conditions on a waiver, then whoever is asking for that waiver needs to come and make a proposal, a written proposal, to council. So at the moment, we have no such proposal from any vendors. So we are authorizing the police to please stop all of the ice cream sales that are around the borough unless those vendors come to us with asking for a waiver.
Does that affect the farmer's market? Did it even come in and test a waiver?
The farmer's market is a good example of when we waive that.
It's already been done by agreement.
Yeah. Thanks for bringing that up.
So I don't know who's been watching Facebook.
And the Arts Fest. And the Arts Fest is.
They both do it through agreement.
Yes.
I would just like to suggest that Chief, rather than shutting them down, that we put together a one pager and let them know, just to be friendly about it. I think that we all like ice cream vendors to be here and law abiding on and away. And maybe a piece of paper that explains what they need to do and the rules that they need to follow might be helpful. And then once, having given that to those folks, if they still decline to come and pull permit, then there's good shutdown at that point.
And I would like to say specifically that Dr. Tarkas and the school district do not want an ice cream truck on school property between 2:30 and 3:00. So that is, that is a major, they are not comfortable with that.
Or at all, I would say.
Right. She specified like establishing a window. She's not, you know, not understanding there's a larger ordinance that it's a violation of.
You don't mean school property. They're not on school property.
They kind of been Highland. They came, he came up Highland and parked in that little area, that little turnaround in the back.
Well, that's not school property.
It's school road.
As a public.
Yeah, well.
That's why I ask.
Right, well, the school district is not letting them there.
And so that's, that's another layering.
That seems like something.
There's a, there have been, I don't, there's been a Facebook heated discussion about the decibel level of the, his music, so.
Have, have either of those guys, because I know there's two. There's Mr. Safdie and there's Mr. Bunny. Have any of those guys been responsive to complaints about the decibel level?
I only know what, if you talk to them, they will turn it down.
If you request, they will turn it down.
Okay, so it's doable.
It is doable. If children don't have money, they're giving, they will, one kid doesn't have money, the other does, they will actually give the other kid an extra. I mean, they're very, very annoying. We've had, I've been here 10 years, we've done ice cream trucks every single summer and we've never had this Facebook explosion where people complain.
All right, thank you very much for your suggestion. I like the idea of having a one pager that would outline. That way they know and go after you. Okay, thank you very much.
I know we're not allowed. Can I ask a question?
relative to that topic?
Yeah. Can you tell me when that ordinance went in effect? What, that, what year? Because I've been here 55 years and we've had ice cream trucks all over places. We've never had a problem. I'm just curious when that came in effect, what year that was.
I actually did look, but I can't remember.
I don't know.
Was that something?
We need information.
Was that, was that something new or is it something that's been around for 15 years?
Complaints are new.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry, I didn't know that. Okay, thank you.
No, it's, it's not new at all.
This was never enforced then?
That's right.
All right, so those were my three new business items. Anyone else have any new business? Yes?
I had a resident email me and some other people. And it's in reference to something that Ed has brought up before in the past about Highland Avenue, that there's a Highland Avenue in Jankontown and that SPS is also on Highland. And it's directing huge trucks into our neighborhoods.
Oh, wow.
And they have to turn around and back out and they're damaging the curb and.
Yeah, and getting hung up on wires. And we kind of had a, two or three of us, including the resident, had a, we went back and forth with emails about resulting in. I think Ed alluded to the fact that it would take three years to get Google to change their, their maps. You know, I didn't, I really don't have an answer or a solution at the moment. I told the resident that I would email Steve McCarter's office to see if they had a contact or a name or any experience with anything like that.
Great.
One thing I've seen on, I think so Barren Hill Road coming from Conshohocken up to Ridge, they've got a big sign saying trucks, the newspaper office isn't here. Because I guess they have the same problem. These trucks are going down River Road on the wrong side looking for the newspaper.
Yeah, I did.
Maybe we could put a sign up like that. Say SPS is that way, not down here.
Could I ask that this be brought to public safety for some problem solving?
Sure.
Okay, great. Thank you for bringing that to, who would have thought? Was there somebody else who had new business? All right, we need to adjourn, we need out of this session and go into executive session. We will go back into exec, or into regular section at the end of executive session. And we have to discuss a personnel matter.